All right. Thank you all for coming. We will reconvene our meeting that we recessed earlier today. We are here for the purpose of a legislative update. We have Senator Green and Senator Retkey before us. So where do you want to start?
Jeff.
I just wanted to share a little bit about the handout that I gave you. The front page is kind of a summary from the February 2025 state budget update. It shows the forecast deficit in 26, 27, and the forecast deficit in 28, 29. There is currently a small surplus. That means the 26, 27 biennium doesn't operate at a deficit to funds available. But we are looking at about a $6 billion deficit in 28, 29. A few of the changes in federal policy, some of the assumptions that were used in the calculation of that from the November to the December or to the January forecast are included. Interesting note is that HHS spending surpasses school spending in 2029. And then just one comment is that the total county property tax levy in 2024 was about $4 billion. If the deficit is $6 billion, we can't balance this on the county levy. The second page is kind of a brief description of some of the cost shifts or changes that we that are included in the governor's proposal and to some extent in the House and the Senate proposal. And then the third page kind of gives a basic assumption of starting place. If all of these things happen, we're going to be looking at 5% to 6% increases to carry our cost of living and benefit increases for our current staffing levels. And we're going to be looking at a total of double-digit figures with these cost shifts in 26, 27. And as you see, the problem doesn't get better in 28, 29. So this is kind of setting the stage for additional shifts to us. So as I just mentioned, a $350,000 house in 2026 would see about a at a 10% county levy increase would see about a $100 per year tax increase on the county level. Can't speak for what the schools are going to have to do and what the townships and the cities are going to have to do. But that's that's just kind of the general summary is is that if this budget passes at the state and certain things happen at the federal level, double-digit increases are almost unavoidable. And I would suggest we're in as good a position as anybody in greater Minnesota right now relative to the impact we're going to see as opposed to a Wadena County or a Beltrami County. And I think you guys have seen some of those numbers too. So our goal today was just to let you folks have a conversation.
Okay. With that information, I guess what are you going to arm wrestle who starts?
We've got the end of the session is scheduled for May 19th at this point, right? We're on a one-week break now and the end of the legislative session is scheduled for May 19th.
Yeah, that's the adjournment date according to our constitution. And as far as Steve and I are concerned, that is our adjournment date. No extra time at all because but you know, you hear all kinds of things, but that's the target. We know the next four weeks are going to be a real bumpy road. But so be it. That's part of it, etc. The only thing I'll add to what Jeff just said, he talked about the counties portion of what goes out on that tax statement, but our school districts are getting hammered. They are going to get theirs is going to be equal, if not more, as far as the increases. The bad part of it is you guys send out the tax statements. You're going to get the calls even though there's a city tax, township tax, wherever they live, plus the school and the county portion. So it's unfortunately nothing but probably bad news when it comes to what is your tax statement going to look like? And a big part of it is kind of what you've put in some of your stuff here. It's not fair and it's from the state level and what's proposed so far, particularly what makes the publications, of course, is the governor's proposal, and that's rotten to the core. The fact that they're willing to balance it on the backs of the biggest target is the disabled and the elderly. And then basically that's just a county shift and expecting you guys to pick up that difference. When at the same time, the governor's budget is still increasing spending to the departments, to agencies, which if anybody needs to tighten their belt, it's the agencies. You've got you're showing the revenues. I mean, Minnesota doesn't have a revenue problem. It's a spending problem. There's more than enough money down there that's coming in. It's just that they won't give up on the what I call stupid projects and spending. And we've, you know, that's the battle day in and day out is just trying to pull back on their priorities, which we say are misguided and make them focus on what our true obligation at the state level is. And so that battle will continue. And I guess when May 19th rolls around, our biggest hope is that this thing isn't getting dumped back on our counties because you guys and what you guys are is you pass it on. We're all taxpayers and we're all getting stuck with this and it's not fair. It's not right and it shouldn't happen. So I guess with that, it's more of, you know, the give and take of questions, answers, things, topics you want to cover because I know there's a bunch of bad stuff that's costing money. And you know, even this morning down in Todd County, part of it is, you know, whether it's the African-American Family Preservation Act or any of these Safe and Six and Paid Family Medical Leave and these shifts, we know the terminology, but anytime you can attach numbers to it, that's great because then it's, you know, those specific numbers are how it affects each county. And that's the part that I know I myself would like to hear. So thanks.
I would say that, you know, looking at the numbers, some of it's due to inflation. We know that. But that only happened after they printed all the money on the federal level, but that doesn't help us. But other than that, when you look at the increase of revenues that are coming into the state, what's changed? You know, except for more mandates. They've increased taxes, which is driving up businesses. But you know, we all know that, but what's the solution? And that's, you know, I talked to the school districts on that. And at least in the Bemidji area, they're working on that, which is to inform people as to what's going on. And that might be our best bet for right now. You know, you can look at what the property taxes are going to do if they put these shifts in. But if you add that to what they've already done with the mandates that have come down for you guys, you know, the total number is even much higher than what you've got on this paper. If you're like Monoman County, for instance, and the increases that we've seen. And one of the solutions that I would like to see, but no one listens to me. So that's why you guys have to get together, other counties and school districts and cities and townships, and say, "Look, we don't have this." And if you're going to do that, then there has to be some mandate relief. You can't force us to do the mandates and then not give us the money to do it because we don't have the money. And that that's not the end-all, be-all. It's not the final solution. But it because we do need to cut spending in certain places. But at least it would be something that would maybe tide you over. And then hopefully we can get things under control because if things continue to go, I mean, you were just saying the counties are going to go bankrupt. I know you're talking a 10% increase and I'll be meeting with Beltrami on Monday. And they were already telling me they're looking at 15. So 15% increase across the board just for the county, not counting the school districts that everybody's going to get hit with. And they don't have the tax base. 17% of their property is taxable. And so I truly believe that the governor did this the way he did, especially in the Health and Human Services, because that's where he could cause the most pain. And they still they don't want to stop spending. They don't want to stop any of their programs. They just want to continue to raise taxes. And it's not going to work.
So before we get into deep questions, you know, we started with an $18 billion surplus a couple of years ago, correct?
Nineteen.
$19 billion surplus. Can you explain to the taxpayers of Hubbard County how we went from an $18 billion surplus to looking at a negative $6 billion to a $6 billion deficit in a matter of three and a half years? What happened?
Well, they took the money. The first thing they did, and there's always that, you know, what was the starting point? You know, it was 19, but then it gets called 18. It gets 17 and a half. One of the first bills they put through was putting inflation into that, which took a billion and a half and wiped it off the top right away. So that's why there's always a difference of what is that starting point? But it was $19 billion coming out of the forecast at that time. But they turned around and not only did all of that get spent, you know, another 10 billion was raised in taxes. But they took that money and, you know, if you built a road, you built bridges, you built buildings. It's basically one and done. There is maintenance down the road, but your expenditures stop when you wrote the final check. Number one, they funded a lot of nonprofits to programs that don't end. And then they did some other, a lot of other one-time funding, you know. A couple of months ago, I heard the comment came out. Somebody said, "They're cutting Meals on Wheels." So I started doing a little checking into it. You know, these things aren't being cut, but what they did do is, and then there was a bunch of, a lot of COVID money was still involved in that $19 billion. So they took COVID dollars out of that and gave them one-time funding. Any of these programs that get started with one-time funding, they don't end. You know, now there's people coming back. They're wanting this to be ongoing. There isn't the money. But they created a lot of these programs with ongoing obligations, but they only really had one-time money upfront because of the surplus. As you look at those going forward, now you've got the tails, the ongoing obligation with no funding. So a lot of that is what's created is what we're looking at is the deficit going forward. It was, I mean, it's understanding what the fiscal responsibility is down there is, I mean, every bill should have a fiscal note. We have to have, we have to know what it costs. A lot of stuff got passed in '23 that we never got fiscal notes on. We would ask about them. It was just not a big deal. They just sent them through. I talked with some of our fiscal people, which are the nonpartisan. And they said, I said, "I hate to keep bothering you on these things." And they said, "No, keep asking" because they could see the financial cliff we were running over. But the stuff got passed.
The reason I'm kind of setting this up is because there was like a 42% increase in the state budget from biennium to biennium.
Government grew just short, a fraction short of 40%, 39. something percent, yes.
So 40% increase. And I just want the taxpayers of Hubbard County to know, you know, exactly what happened because if the state doesn't make the cuts, if they pass it on to the county, it's coming for you. And it's not the local government units doing it to you. So the screaming needs to be pointed down to St. Paul.
And that is true, David, because the talking point is that property taxes are all local. Talk to your commissioners. They never tell you that the commissioners have to deal with the mandates that come from the state. And that's where that is. And as far as the $18 billion goes, I have a theory. I haven't been able to prove it fully yet, but I think the evidence is there that the people of Minnesota were never doing that well. The $18 billion came in because this federal government printed trillions of dollars and just dumped 81 billion of it on Minnesota. And that money got taxed. And so then you end up with a surplus. And we had nonprofits that were springing up overnight. And they weren't saying no to anyone. And that money just started flowing out. And obviously, we can see now with the fraud stuff that we've got coming in. And everybody talks about the Feeding Our Future because that was the big one, $250 million. They should talk about it. But there were numerous small ones as well, smaller, not small, smaller. And they continue to come to light. Now, you're not going to get that money back. It's gone. You might be able to get some of it back, I suppose. But for the most part, it's gone and we're footing the bill. And then you raise taxes by $10 billion and over the next few years. And the only place that they can think to get that is from high-wage earners, they'll say, or corporations. But your corporations, as everybody in this room should know, don't pay taxes. They just raise their prices. Or they leave the state or both. And so the people that are less able to pay for that pay for it anyway. And the people that can leave do. And that hurts us even more. It's like when the money was there, they were like kids in the candy store. And there was nothing set aside when we could have actually, you know, used that. If we're going to deal with the inflation that it caused by printing it anyway, certainly when we were screaming, you know, we did do the one-time funding to buy down some of the bad stuff that we've already done. So it doesn't affect us, but that wasn't an option because there's always a taxpayer, I guess, to make up the difference. But don't, and I had this conversation with one of the other folks from the other side of the aisle in committee the other day when she started ranting and raving about corporate welfare and the rich need to pay their fair share. Well, if you drive them out of the state, they pay nothing. And the corporate welfare they're talking about is if you wanted to have a business come in like we're trying to do now. And they say, "Look, I've got a better deal in North Dakota." And you say, "We'll give you X amount of years of reduced property taxes, not completely reduced, but some reduced if you'll come here." And if they don't get that, they don't come here and we have nothing, right? And we don't have the jobs or the rest of the tax revenue that comes with that. And those are things that have to change. But other than that, I'll quit there. I know you've got other stuff on here like the Pilt and whatever else and AIS you want to talk about, but I'll wait for questions.
That's where I was going to start off with what I would consider the easy one is Pilt. What do you think the future of it is?
I don't know if they're going to be able to pull it or not. It was part of the governor's suggestion. The one thing I would ask you is when you figured in your 34% for the county, did you figure in what their what their actual proposed cut was year to year? Or did you take that from what it was supposed to be if it had continued to go on like it should have? And then down to where it is? Because if you look at it, by 2029, it was scheduled to be $103 million. And that's down to 68 now in the coming years, if you're looking at the Pilt. I don't like Pilt. My suggestion was and still is, if you're going to reduce Pilt, then we have to at a minimum give the counties the option to sell back up to 10% of their tax-forfeited properties to make up for what they're going to be, some of what they're going to be losing. Because you made this promise to them that as you continued to buy land and dump it into the state, that they would be compensated. And now they're not going to be. And federal's worse because there's nothing on federal, as you guys know. That's the issue with the Pilt. Where they're going to land, I don't know. The bill did, it did pass in committee, so it should be on the bill. But I've dealt with those people down there long enough to know when I see the final version of the bill, I'll know if it's in there or not.
Which goes to one of your points that you've been bringing up for, I don't know, about a part of a decade. As long as you've been in office, is the properties we're losing to nonprofit organizations purchasing and then conveying it to a government entity. And we're losing that potential tax revenue from new development and getting Pilt. And everybody thinks Pilt is great. Well, now you're finding out how easily Pilt gets.
Well, just for the record on camera, Pilt is tax dollars that they've taken from you. And now they're paying you back with it. It's like a scam. So it's crazy.
Yeah, with some of these lands that they're purchasing, they're using, like the 3M property that just sold, they're using tax dollars to purchase it and then taking it off the tax rolls.
Correct.
So getting a double whammy there.
Yeah, at least a portion of their funds comes from tax dollars. Yep. And then we can't say no, which again, I know you're well aware of this issue, Steve and Paul. And it's a free market, you know, I get all of that, but at some point in time, you know, we should have, we should have a say.
If I was running a corporation and I had an answer to a board of directors and I started buying assets for that corporation that they didn't need, then I'm no longer fiscally responsible. The state is buying assets that they don't need. And so this willing buyer, willing seller does not apply here because you're using someone else's money. It's like giving to the charity after I've robbed the money from Dave Delahunt. I'm not charitable. I'm still a thief. So it doesn't apply.
At very minimum, if there's taxpayer dollars involved at all in the purchase of the thing, government entities should have a say on whether that property can be sold that way. If they're not using taxpayer funds in any form or manner, it's all private transaction. And then there's nothing you really can do about that unless, you know, it's still problematic if they turn around and do it and then convey it to a government entity and take it off the tax rolls.
Yep. A lot of that goes on.
So the DNR hasn't spent the dollars that they were allocated. They still have money left over. I'm wondering why they, why AIS can't be funded from the excess from the DNR.
Well, you need representatives and senators willing to grab it. And so far, I haven't been able to convince enough of them that we need to do that. For some reason, they believe that the DNR is this omnipresent source that you can't question. If the DNR says it's so, it's so. It's not true. There's multiple millions of dollars in those funds that could be taken back because it's not spent yet. Like you said, it's just sitting there.
Sounds like in the current budget crunch, it should be taken back.
Exactly.
To answer the question about the calculation of Pilt, this was a budgeted number. It's not a projected what Pilt was to have grown to. So this is actually an underrepresented financial impact for the county. Basically on what Senator Green mentioned. And the problem with the Pilt one is there are two counties that you guys both know are really dependent on that. Cooch and Lake of the Woods, 20, over 20% of their Pilt payment is 20% of their levy. And then the next, the next 10 counties, including Hubbard County, are anywhere from 2.5% to 4.5% of that levy. So that loss would equal that amount of levy required just to make up that general revenue.
I was happy to see Grant, old child, on the other side of the aisle than I am personally, but very upset about the Pilt cut too because obviously that's his county.
With his district, he should be. I mean, that's his whole district is, you know. So we'll see though. I mean, they say one thing and then when they go to push the button, they fall in line with it. But he should be in line with saving it.
So generally, just a description because we know what we're looking at, but we haven't explained it to anybody else who might be there. There's some of the most significant funding changes are in human services. One is a new local share for adult waiver services. Two of them are increases in the local share for other programs. And then as we've been talking about, the AFPA legislation that requires a higher level of response and active management of casework. Generally, that ends up being close to, well, a million and a quarter over two years' impact here. And I know it hits other people worse because they, because our team is doing a really good job of being close to those active efforts in their case management. AIS is a number that, again, something that here in Minnesota with tourism and lakes and woods, I know it looks like an easy number, but the cut in funding for Hubbard County or the funding in Hubbard County secures about that much more, $180,000 in donations from lake associations and townships because they're invested in tourism in these communities. So our impact is not a quarter million dollars. It's closer to $450,000, assuming that those matching funds wouldn't be available if we didn't have the preliminary source. Aside from the other items that are on here, Hubbard County is a part of a nine-county group applying for bonding for Hub and Spoke project. And I know you guys have been supportive of that concept. Do you have any idea where that is? If that's, has that been heard? Has that been included in another bill or?
Honestly, first of all, other than conversations, nothing's happened related to bonding at this point. But I don't know what took so long. We have had that bill language in, which seems like forever. But we did actually finally get jackets this last week. So now it is officially in the system. I think that its number will probably show up on Tuesday of this following week. But the fact is, all involved know what the numbers are. I turned that stuff in a long time ago. Now, what's going to happen related to bonding? Who knows? Because I really truly believe the rougher the road is on the finish, coming up, trying to come up with agreements that, I mean, if they take and push a bunch of this garbage down our throats, there's going to be no appetite to work together on a bonding bill and these other things. Because the bad, the good part on bonding, it takes more than 50%. We've got to have, what, 41 or 42 votes to pass it. So it takes bipartisan work. But then that also means it brings in projects that you go, these are absolutely garbage. We want nothing. And I guess that's a play on words. I mean, we're talking about landfills, but we just camped stomach. I mean, typically, I think we agree that if we're going to have a bonding bill, it needs to be, I mean, it should be all infrastructure. It should be the things that we are actually obligated to do. And, you know, this landfill process is completely horrible in the fact that it's mandated on you by the MPCA. If they're going to tell all these counties that your permits, when they expire, are not being renewed, there should be money coming from the state to help do that, just like we've got a number of counties that are building jails because Department of Corrections has said they have to. State money should follow those orders. And but so that's where we're at. I don't know. I know that the Chair of the Bonding Committee in the Senate doesn't really like the bill. She doesn't think that bonding should be for these landfills. It shouldn't be for jails. But what the heck? I mean, that's, if there's going to be a bonding, the state needs to participate. So we shall see. I think that the rougher the road though is on the rest of the budget. If it's a really rough road, I think the chances for a bonding bill are really slim. If there finally is some agreements to work together, then you might see something there that's favorable. rough road, I think the chances for a bonding bill are really slim. If there, finally is some agreements to work together, then you, you might see something there that's favorable, but I don't know what these last four weeks are gonna look like.
We could reduce that bonding request significantly if we release, reduce the MPCA requirement for line demolition landfills.
Exactly.
That's what we're talking about demolition. We're not talking, and if we, if we lose our permits on our demo landfill, everything has to go to the landfill.
Yep.
Which is gonna fill up faster and it's gonna cost more to replace, so.
I mean, yeah, you're exactly right. The, the requirements for this demolition landfill that's being proposed and the materials that go in it, it's, it's absolutely insane. The, the two don't go together.
On the same theme, turning back to the big elephant in the room, the health and human services. You know, obviously, the state's got a cut. I mean, we're back, we're backed into a corner, they got a cut. You gotta balance the budget. It's gotta come from somewhere, so obviously the bulk of it's coming from there. The problem with all of this stuff is regulations cost money. Regulations are necessary in a lot of ways for the safety of people, products, whatever. But if you're gonna make monetary cuts in a budget, you've gotta make appropriate cuts in regulation too, otherwise you're never gonna get there. You're just passing the burden on. Nursing, nursing homes are a perfect example. What did between the federal and the state government do to us coming out of COVID and during COVID? Increased the amount of personnel you had to have per patient. And it just keeps going. Forced us to increase wages. It just keeps coming and it keeps coming. Now they're gonna come back and cut our reimbursement rates even below a rate that's woefully inadequate to start with in the first place, that we're having to try and compensate for. And we're gonna have the same regulations? It doesn't work. And you can, you can say the same thing about the home-based daycare model. The regulations broke it. It broke the business model and yet there's no appetite to roll back the regulations to fix the problem that government created in the first place.
It's act, it's actually getting worse.
It's irritating, it's irritating as hell.
Yeah.
You know, it really is, because it's not rocket science. It's like, when the going gets good, you get away with it, but when the going gets tough and you're gonna cut money, you gotta cut back regulation and let the local government units do what they do best and decide what's important and prioritize the services they wanna provide. Then you can get there. If you don't do that, you, you, you just, it's just a mess. And so my, my story to you guys, and I know you know this because we talk a lot, but if they're gonna cut that budget, give us the authority to tailor the programs the way we need to tailor it, with the amount of case aids per patient we think we need to do to make it work in our county. Don't tell us how to run the program if you're not gonna give us the damn money. Let us figure it out. Every county's got smart people involved, they got smart workers, loyal to their job, they'll figure it out. But if you just cut the money and you say, we gotta still do all the same things, it's gonna be a train wreck.
Yeah. And, and that train is on the tracks coming our way unfortunately, because when you talk about rates being cut, reduced, at the same time, we've got that Workforce Standards Board that, that action is coming into play, which is, again, is raising your costs due to mandates, right? One of the questions I got, Jeff was mentioning, when we look at the cost shift, a lot of it is through the waiver program. Do you know what your waiver program costs will be yet under the new proposal?
I think we, I think we do. I think we thought that that could be close to $800 for us, or $800,000.
$800,000, okay, that makes sense.
And that was conservative, just based on how projected, how much you projected.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's in the.
I think on page, on page three, page three there.
Three it is, okay, yep.
Paul, before we go on, so the Chair, what does the Chair feel bonding should be used for if it wasn't for landfills or jails? Just curious.
The Rondo Park Project and trails and all this other stuff that, I, I honestly, I mean, I, I can't get to where I could think like Sandy Pappas. That would be a problem, but, you know, that, when you look at their proposed bonding structure, I mean, it, it isn't a infrastructure-heavy proposal. It's all these other wishes and wants versus needs.
And then my second question is, what happens if a county files bankruptcy?
I don't know.
I, I mean, because we've had a neighboring county say that, that might happen, and we have another neighboring county that said, you know, they're, they're thinking their levy would be 27%.
We had a neighboring county four years ago, five years ago, and that had to do with the, basically, child foster care and all the costs that were being dumped on, and those you have no control over, the bill just shows up and you gotta pay it. And their numbers were really, really bad. And we were able to connect it with some federal money because of their circumstances and that helped them get stabilized. But they were on the verge of that. They kept talking about it, they couldn't have made it another year or so. And, but it was like, I don't know what the consequences are. I mean, we know what happens when private people or businesses file bankruptcy and what the results are and how the process goes, but I don't know how it works at a government agent, you know, like this, a county. I don't think I've ever heard of it, but it gets to be a point where you just, you know, there's no more money.
I'll check into it, Shar, but I believe what would happen, and this is just, just a belief, going from what happens with townships is that it would be absorbed by the state probably.
That was my point.
And so, and so the, and, but, but that's not gonna help your people by any means. So.
So, I'm on the Prime West Board and every week during the legislative session, I get a report. And so, this was on the report for this weekend, one out of every $3 spent by the Minnesota state government comes from the federal government? So, in 2025, Minnesota received $23.3 billion from the federal government for 680, funding 687 federal grants. So, what happens if, if the feds cut programs that Minnesota is depending on their money? And then are they just gonna try trickle that back down to the counties?
Well, maybe Paul's better to answer this, but I believe that that's what the scare is right now. It's because Minnesota refuses to be in compliance. And the other thing too is, the, I don't know, I don't know that there's really any proposed cuts by the state except for that they're gonna go after fraud. And it seems like the people that didn't, that were afraid of them going after for fraud, started ginning up all these cuts. And then the governor comes out with his proposal and everybody gets scared. And maybe we should be scared, but we do have to go after the fraud if you look at what's been going on. And, and like I was telling David earlier, I, I asked for information from Health and Human Services probably about a year ago, maybe not quite, but last, last year for sure. Because, and it wasn't anything specific, I just wanted to know what nonprofits, their money was going to, because I believe that they sent out to nonprofits too, and I didn't even get a response. So, I think that there is things that we could do. The, the reason that we have gone and found the fraud we have now, I believe is because the money that they were using was federal money, was came in from COVID. And so then we got the federal, the feds to come in and start doing investigations. And that's where these things have been turned over. And so, I'm not, I'm not completely convinced that you're gonna see these cuts from the federal government, but I do think that if they find fraud, then they're gonna cut the fraud. But we'll see.
Most of those programs have, and they did have COVID dollars, but they all have some sort of MA or Medicaid funding in them, which then brings in, in some cases, up to 60% federal dollars. So, that's been the good part about that partnership is the feds came in and investigated and found it because that branch of our state doesn't do anything to stop fraud. In fact, if, if they stop too much of the fraud, it'll reduce their campaign donations, so they, they don't like that, unfortunately, when you see what's going on behind the scenes. But when you mentioned one in three dollars come from the feds, that's actually, it seems a little bit low, because a lot of times, and, and it's probably close, but, you know, up until this last year, we, two years ago, we had a $52 billion budget. Our total state spending was probably, double that would be 104 billion over the two years, but it was probably in the 90s, mid to upper 90s. And a biggest share of that extra money is fed stuff, but then there's also some fees and other things that come in and flow in, because usually the budget is almost double what the general fund spending is. And the general fund spending is what you typically hear. But when you come into the HHS, both the Health and the Human Services Departments, in a lot of cases, it's actually over 50% of that is federal money, particularly in Department of Human Services, which 80% of the Department of Human Service spending is under the Medicaid programs of all sorts, all these waivers and everything else. That's running almost, what, probably in the neighborhood of 60% of that money is feds.
Thank you.
Back to the county getting, or filing for bankruptcy, I would imagine that it would be broken up and absorbed by neighboring counties in a mutual agreement, I would think is probably what would end up happening, but we hope it never gets to that.
Well, I, I hope it never gets to that too, but the problem there is then you would be laying more burden on the other counties and, and, I'm not gonna make any, any accusations, but I would say it almost seems like that's the design. You know, because there's been an effort for years to go to like three counties in Minnesota now, bigger groups. But regardless, what they're doing is not working.
So, making sure our small businesses have a voice here, has there been any discussion about amendment to exclude small businesses from the Safe and Sick time and, based on number of employees? I thought I heard in MRC that there was an amendment being proposed. And number two, have you guys looked at, you know, and with the budget being what it is, can we maybe look at delaying that a couple of years? Let things kinda settle down and wash out before you start adding more taxes on small business?
There's a number of bills to do a lot of different things to both the Safe and Sick and the Paid Family Medical Leave. From, you know, and the Safe and Sick in particular, you know, one of the proposals was to eliminate it on, if your business had under 11. So, if you had 10 or fewer employees, you weren't gonna be affected by it. Got the Paid Family Medical Leave coming up, you know, there's, there's things there to push that down the road further. You know, anything to, we're, we're not gonna get rid of them under this current environment, but if we can delay something, it helps give us a little more time and see how things react. Same thing with the African American Family Preservation Act. That doesn't come into play for you guys until January 1 of '27. Hennepin and Ramsey currently, it went into effect the first of this year for basically a couple of year ramp up, but even there, we're trying to get a couple more years, push it down the road so that we can get a little breathing time to actually figure out what it is and figure out what adjustments can and should be made, because there's just been too much dumped on both the counties, the schools. Everybody's just got a ton of mandates. Schools got, I think, the list I got was 80 mandates in the last two years. You can't keep up with that.
So, at MRC, it was brought up, how come there, you know what, Ramsey and Hennepin, how come there wasn't a rural county or two that were also doing a pilot program? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, it, how it's handled, the costs are gonna be so different? And so they thought, instead of just doing, you know, the metro and then implementing for all, why aren't we looking to see how it would affect us?
I think partly because both of those counties were doing similar stuff pretty much already, so it wasn't a big change for them. But that's very true. I mean, what they're gonna see from this so-called test is irrelevant to the rest of the state. You know, what is every rural, small county? I mean, when you talk about the numbers, you just said a million and a quarter over the two-year. Wadena told me a little over a million dollars and I was, that was, I think, just to stand it up, so that'd be your first year. I mean, these are huge, serious numbers versus what Hennepin and Ramsey go through on a daily basis. It's, it's just not apples for apples. It's, 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 I mean, apples and bananas or whatever you wanna do for comparisons, they're not even close. And we've tried to, you know, make some adjustments and I don't, I know we've had conversations with, you know, this bill comes from Bobby Joe Champion of North Minneapolis and trying to get him to buy into a delay because he's gonna, I'm sure, keep his caucus together when it comes to this issue, because he, he kept them all whipped together, you know, when they put this in play in the first place. And so far, the answer's been no to everything, but we'll, we'll keep seeing where we can push this, because he's got a few other issues on his plate right now that maybe he'll let go of this one a little bit.
The other thing with, with the Paid Family Leave is the, statistically, they'll go out and do their polls on that, and it's, it polls at 70% favorable off the top when you mentioned Paid Family Leave across the state. But when you add in the fact that they, every single employer and every single employee will be paying it, and it also hires 400 new state employees to run it, that number drops down to 50%. So, there's, there's a lot of information that people don't know, because every single person that's out there working is gonna be paying that. And, and the, the money is not going to be sufficient, as we've seen from the other states. You know, they, they pretend to be shocked that that many people actually applied, and the state had to put more money in and continues to rise. At this point, I think we're at 0.88%, I believe it is, and they can go up to 1.25% tax, but as it stands right now, the latest number was it's gonna take 1.30% just to break even on it. And that's what I think are low numbers. So, it's not a workable situation, it's only gonna cause a lot of problems. And I don't, I'm not one of those guys that I don't wanna fix it, that's where, I just wanna kill it, because it's not gonna work. But that's, that's where we're at now.
Yeah. I mean, look at what that's costing us as taxpayers. We're gonna have $4 or $5 billion in that before it's ever stood up and running. And it's just gonna be a money pit going forward, it's ugly.
If you measure the results of any government program, in most cases, none of them work.
Right.
Well, we had all this information that Jeff prepared, and it's, that's our impact, but the one thing that was on my mind here, just thinking about something I had heard at one of the AMC meetings, was MnDOT is projecting a huge shortfall over the next 10 years. They're gonna be in the billions. What was it, $898 million a year for the next 10 years? They're gonna be short.
There's really simple things we can do there too, but it, no one wants to listen or no one cares, I guess. The regulations that are imposed on all of our projects, I think that the last numbers I used to use was 25% increase in every project for regulations. I think that's closer to 30 now. And, and it's, it's foolish things. It's like mitigating land, you have to buy, buy land somewhere else and you gotta put everything back exactly the way it was anyway. And, and all the other things that go with the, the road, the permitting to get projects done. I don't even think I have to talk to you guys about that, what that means. And all that money goes into the agencies for, for their personnel, and they charge by the, by the person, so, you know, you're, you're right. And I think we, I think there's a lot of things that we could deal with, we just have to have the courage to do it and until people understand what it is, because the minute you say, we don't need to mitigate any more land, right away, the environmentalists come and say, you're gonna destroy the environment, and that's simply not true.
Yeah. One of the things we had talked about at the Association of Minnesota Counties, the Transportation, anyway, Committee, was that we don't want any of that to trickle down to the counties, what the state is having to do and having to meet the requirements for those projects, because it would, it would bankrupt anything. We couldn't get anything done.
I think you already are meeting a lot of those mandates. If you look at the, you know, some of the things that you do and, and the costs that go into them, they may be hidden for you, but they're still there. And so, there's just, there, there needs to be common sense. You know, we've got enough state land now that's, that's preserved, we're, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're over a third. We're, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're over a third of the state now. Most of it is in the northern part of the state already. And so if we need a project to keep people safe, we should be able to do that project as cheap as we can. And that's, you know, that's something we need to work towards.
Another, another one is prevailing wage. I mean, it literally stops projects in rural Minnesota.
Yep.
From happening. They can't afford them then.
I've heard projects in, in rural Minnesota where they don't even apply for grants anymore. Because if they do get state money, they have to pay prevailing wage and the whole grant goes to the wage. And, and whatever residuals left doesn't pay for what they had to go through to get the, the project done.
We were better off when we built the Pine Cross Apartments here, doing what we did through local tax abatement rather than getting a grant, because the prevailing wage requirement would have been just as expensive to do it with.
Plus the paperwork.
Yep. And it would have been a lot, taken a lot more time to get it done. Probably still wouldn't be done, no.
It would have, it was seven hundred thousand on seven, seven million would have been the prevailing wage cost.
So there's a, there's a perfect example of one size doesn't fit all. And yet it's applied statewide and it hurts rural, rural areas.
And before we get away from the AIS too much and some of the environmental stuff, the Environmental Trust Fund, I don't know if you guys are too much aware of that, but it's sitting on just about two billion dollars in that, in that fund. And every year they can take now seven percent of that out and do projects with. So this year is a hundred and three million dollars. Out of a hundred and three million dollars, forty-one million of that money goes to the University of Minnesota across the state, different universities for project, for
Research?
Research, so-called research. But it, and some of it might be good, but some of it is going into studying crevices in trees. One project that I'll be talking about on the floor where is, they're going to get volunteers to go out, pick, pick up dead animals out of the woods and bring them in and find out what they died from. And so all this money that people voted for clean water is going for stuff like this. And so I tried, started to dig into that. And what I found out is that the money, that forty-one million, a good share of it is going to backfill the wages of the professors. So it's, so for instance, if you, if your professor is making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for ten thousand dollars a month, the university is paying him for nine months of that. And then they go out and get them grants to backfill their wages through the summer. And so your clean water funds that should be going for the AIS and for cleaning up, whatever you want to do within the clean water is subsidizing your university for, for projects, for most projects that I think, my personal opinion is are, are worthless.
And this is all tax dollars to fund it?
This is, well, this is, the, the Environmental Trust Fund is, is more than one pocket. They, they, if, if we didn't, right now, the, what, what they voted on was to put the lottery money back into that. And, but if the lottery money hadn't gone there, they would still have that two billion dollars to go off of. It's kind of self-funding right now because the state still does put money into in other places. But they've got their own patents, for heaven's sake, for things that they've done with that. And so they're, they're bringing money in for that. And so I would really like to see something done different there. At least, at least bring out, you know, let people know what they voted for when they voted to put, keep that money going into that. And, and if you want your AIS, that's a really good place to fund it from.
So there are other, other places where programs were, but the cannabis issue was passed last year. And there was eighty percent to the state, ten percent to the counties, ten percent to the cities. And before we even got a payment, that's been pulled out of the projected one point five billion dollars of revenue that was supposed to generate, that probably would have landed two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year here, once that program was up and running. That we'll not realize now. Not dissimilar from score funds that are meant to, to support recycling and, and efforts like that that have been redirected for other uses or even go back a ways and look at the, the state general sales tax when those rate changes were switched and seasonal properties don't pay on some of the school operating referendum, but they pay into the state general sales tax. But that money that was supposed to come back to the schools never has. So it, it, I'm not sure anybody up here was supporting the cannabis bill, but they were at least satisfied that there was going to be some revenue coming out of it. And it looks like that's going to stop after this first year's payment.
Yeah, we lost all the way around on that. Then you're losing that funding and they also had funding built into it for mental health and education and all these things. I mean, you're bringing out something that's illegal and dangling it in front of everybody. But then they were paying for some of these services to get them back off of an addictive drug. Well, they've already started cutting those and they've taken pretty healthy chunks out of that funding. So they're pulling it all back. And I mean, it's to legalize that in the first place and create the problems it will. I mean, your sheriff's department's going to deal with more of it. Your jail's going to be full of, you know, have more people. And from the mental health on the social services side, that's going to grow, all related to what cannabis does. And yeah, they've yanked those funds back or in the process of doing that.
And wasn't there an additional four hundred some employees that would have to be brought on to manage cannabis also?
The cannabis office right now is about four people.
But I thought they were.
That's the office cannabis. I don't, I don't know that the cannabis was four hundred. I know the paid family leave was four hundred. I, I thought the cannabis one was to start with, like started out at twenty-seven and then moved up to maybe fifty and then after that I kind of lost track. So I believe, I'd have to relook, look at that.
I don't even, I don't know either. But yeah, it wasn't, I mean, one was too many as far as I was concerned, but yet it was a smaller number where yeah, the paid family medical leave was, I think, four thirty, four forty to start with. And who knows where that's going to end? It's creating a whole new agency for something that we did not need. If we wanted paid family medical leave, all we had to do is approve that the Department of Commerce let it come in and let your, your life insurance agents sell that product. The people that sell you short and long-term disability could have sold paid family medical leave. So that whether it was you as the county or if you owned a business, you had to, you could design it to fit your needs. A lot of big businesses already doing it their way. But it's a tool to retain your employees or recruit. I mean, and that's, that's fair. A business could have that option if they so desire, because there's a lot of small businesses that can't afford it. Both financially and you can't afford, if you only got a handful of people, that somebody's going to take off twelve weeks on you in the middle of summer up here in Park Rapids. Well, that employee doesn't do any good at that point. You have to have that working arrangement between the boss or manager and the employee so that we cover our bases. But this was absolutely the worst way to do it, but of course, that's what they picked.
You could run that through Department of Unemployment Insurance without adding any staff.
You want to talk?
Steve's laughing. You, you could do that through a payroll increase and run it through the Department of Unemployment and not add any staff.
I, I know what you're saying, but they would, you know, because it's run on the same type of system.
Yep.
But we know where that one would head.
So I know this isn't a real priority and I know I'm preaching to the choir a little bit here, but I don't forget COVID very easily and what happened. And I brought this up at MRC the other day too. And I remember some, some of our friends on the other side of the aisle promised that they'd take a look at this. And I haven't seen anything yet, but right now, the emergency declaration statute allows the governor to declare an emergency and he gets so much time before, it has to come before the legislative bodies. And currently, the way it's written, both legislative bodies have to agree to eliminate it. Otherwise, the governor can extend it indefinitely until such time.
The governor and his executive team.
Yes. So now, you know, after living it for a while, we saw what happened. We were under emergency declaration a lot longer than we probably should have been. And maybe earlier in some counties than we should have been. It seems to me the right way to rewrite that statute is to have both legislative bodies have to vote to continue the emergency declaration in order for the governor to continue it. If it's really in an emergency, you shouldn't have any problem building consensus. But right now, the way it was, it took one legislative body's entire voice away for a year and a half almost.
Did you know that what you're suggesting was the law up until maybe a year or two, maybe at the most before COVID? So if you're a conspiracy person, think about that.
Yeah. Most states, most states are, are written the way I proposed it.
And so was ours.
Yep. And now it's not. So it, it puts too much power in the governor's hands, especially when you have split government. You know, you want as good a checks and balances as you can get. But every time I bring this up to my friends on the other side, I get an argument back the other. If you just simply put yourself on the other side of the aisle, you would dislike it just as much if it's flipped. And yet I don't understand. One of the committee chairs during COVID, I was listening in on the Zoom meeting, promised to address this. It should be super simple to fix and it should be bipartisan. I don't know why it's such an issue. I know it's not a priority with the concerns you have, but this should be a real simple thing.
You know, it, it should be, but even if they said that back when we were dealing with it, they absolutely won't do it at this point. But I mean, it, it needs to be done at some point because we use that same argument as a fact. Give us a trifecta and then we'll see what you say. But just for good governance, it, it should be that way where it takes the legislature to approve it. The governor's going to have to have, you know, whatever, what's that magic number? Do they get seven days, do they get ten days, do they get twelve days? No more than that, but they have to have the option to react. But anything after that, the legislature needs to be involved and they have to improve it, approve it going forward. You know, I don't know how many times we voted to take it away in the Senate, but at that point, the House had no ears for it.
Okay, any more questions for the senators?
I have one. Do you have any words of optimism?
Yes, I do. We are, for the first time since I can remember, actually actively going after fraud. Sell a little bit in Minnesota, but mostly on a federal level. I think that the, the numbers that we're seeing there prove that to, to most Satan people that, that we need some changes. We should see if, if, if we can continue with deporting the illegals eventually in Minnesota as well. We should see some, some relief there. So I won't go into some of the numbers because we'd be here for a long time, but the, the border crossings have all been, been eliminated. That's, that should be a relief to a lot of people. There's still a lot of work to do, but at least we know it can be done. And, and we need to keep going down that path. So I think that other thing that I think is probably a plus for us is that even though it took some pretty disastrous things to happen in this state and in this country, more people are paying attention now. More people are getting involved and understanding and wanting to learn. You know, we see, we see pictures of young people that making really foolish statements on TV, but the people that I'm talking to, the young people that I'm talking to in Minnesota, I'm very encouraged. And I think all we need to do is hold on to enough for them to take over. And I think that you're going to see some changes. It's my hope anyway and my prayer. So.
Yeah, no, I, I agree that a lot of what we see at the federal level, people in Minnesota are paying attention. We need some of that here. I don't know how much we, we will get of it at this point. We'll hope that it comes in, but the fact that people are finally, are paying attention. And the big thing is you listen to this stuff about our, our young generation. They're paying attention and watching and seem to have a good grasp on things. So that's good news. You know, how long are we going to have to deal with the issues that we got in front of us? Hopefully at some point we can get over this hump. But unfortunately for the next four years in particular, it's going to be a challenge, but.
Two years in Minnesota.
I mean, I'm just looking at the four-year budget.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I know what you're referring to. And two, we get another bite at the apple there too, which would be very helpful. And that's why some of these things that we hope to push down the road a little bit, you know, we're all eternal optimist, things are going to get better. We're going to get more friends to show up down in St. Paul with us and that we'll have it. But you know, we, the whole hope is at some point is when we sit around these tables and talk with some of these people that, at least the way we see it, is that some common sense is absorbed. I mean, you just can't keep doing all this crazy stuff and expect money to roll in. But when I tell them, we got more than enough money, we just got to quit spending it in these irresponsible ways. The response is we need to raise taxes. The wealthy and these big businesses aren't paying their fair share. We can get another, so many billions of dollars from them. And that's, they just don't seem to sit down and let realities set in. And that's, that's the big disappointment.
Didn't that die that, you know, they were going to add another level for income tax at twelve point, twelve percent? Didn't that kind of just die out?
Yeah, it was proposed, but I think it lost momentum as fast as it started.
I don't think you're going to see that in the House. If you do, get out your club.
That's, that's going to be the big thing this year for all of us to see what happens. And for, on our side at, in the Senate anyhow, what it's going to be is whoever's on those conference committees. But conference committees are going to be really interesting because the House with their arrangement is kind of a dead end. They're kind of butting heads and we don't know what all those bills are going to look like. But then we'll bring in a Senate bill and they're all going to have equal numbers of conferees on the conference committees. And so there can be a lot of, a lot of molding of those final bills in those conference committees. So it's, it's, it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out and we'll hope for the best. We'll hope that our House counterparts go in with a good plan and are able to stay strong.
So you sit on the HHS committee, right, in the Senate?
I'm on the HHS committee and the Human Services Committee.
Cause I listened to the hearing and I can't remember who the, the lady was, but she did a very good job of speaking about how health and human services is broken. Like it doesn't work. It just doesn't work anymore. And she was talking about it really needs a full-scale revamp and how you guys really need to invite counties to the table and do that. Cause it could be a hell of a lot more efficient than it is. And she was really advocating for that. And is there an appetite there to, to totally reexamine it?
At this point?
And bring the people who actually execute the program to the table to talk about how to make it better?
Currently, no, because they all want full one hundred percent government-run everything. It's, you know, and you're, if you're listening to HHS, it's healthcare, you know? They want to, you know, they're going after the managed care organizations, after county-based purchasing, everything. You know, our managed care organizations, the way they operate, they, it's for full, full care. And they, they are, they're working at the PBMs. That money coming in from pharmacy benefit managers is part of all the monies that they bring in to offer the care and the different things they do. You know, the state right now is looking at trying to pull that back too. Pull out the PBM, pull out that section of their monies that they're funding that makes this work. Those are the constant battles we're seeing right now is they want to really take over everything related to that group of people, basically the Medicaid population. You know, they, they've got a small group right now that's under the fee for service, which they've got in-house. But they want to take over the rest of it too.
What's frustrating is, you know, I'm sure, but he feels the same way. We, we don't care about the politics. We just want stuff to work. You know, we're in charge of making this stuff work and executing it, you know? It seems it goes up the state, to the state or federal. It's all politically driven instead. You know, if you had the people that executed the plans at the table, you probably would run so much better. And I mean, that's the job of AMC is to try and convey that information, but it doesn't, doesn't seem to get very far sometimes.
We're not, I guess it's, we're, we feel, and I know Brian has the same feeling, that we're not serving our clients very well by pushing more paperwork, more requirements. Takes more time, uh, to provide more paperwork to hand it off to a manager at the state who's got to satisfy another manager at the state who has to serve another manager at the state to satisfy them. And it does no good for the, for the end user, none. It doesn't benefit them and makes it more stress on all the social workers and so forth that have to do everything and it's just shameful.
It is. I mean, what you're dealing, what you're seeing in the social service programs, no different than what your special ed programs at the schools are going through. They spend all their time doing paperwork and complying with mandates. When they signed up, they got their teaching license to teach and work with kids, you know? It's all that garbage that's in between that cloudies up the system. And it's just like they figure the more they can make you spin your wheels on paperwork, the more productive you are, which is just actually opposite. It, there, there's a lot of people employed just because of that and it accomplishes nothing. And in a world today where we need more people to actually do the job, if we could cut out all that wasted time and actually let them, in the case of social services, work with the people, um, they would be happier and we'd serve our clients to the, and people, contact people so much better. But, um, you know, that's, that's a goal is to, to clean that up and, uh, you know, we hope to someday be in that position where we get a chance to pull out the eraser and start getting rid of some of those useless processes that are costing us all a bunch.
Brian, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just in reference to Commissioner, um, about the, you know, coming together, um, with and being at the table. So I've been part of this task force, um, that's with the county, um, human services directors. There's four county commissioners, DHS, AMC and MaxA. And I tell you what, over the last month, we've been meeting every week down at AMC building. Um, I would say that there is an appetite between the groups that are there to include DHS, that we have an opportunity to work together more often. It was, the governor's office had, wouldn't let them work with us prior to this and then Julie and AMC really got that ball moving, but, um, it's kind of been, it's been frustrating at times. Um, I, but the nice thing is, is that there, we're starting to see as a group, they're starting to see and understand and we understand a little bit of, of how things work. There's an appetite for it and I think that it should, I mean, it should be something that we, we should be able to do. We shouldn't be held back, um, because DHS doesn't always understand and we don't always understand what exactly we can ask specifically of them. Um, and then just my one, one thing we have that does not meet medical criteria dollars, which I know that you guys are familiar with that, that we paid to the direct care and treatment. It's roughly twenty-four million dollars a year we pay for people that are, do not meet, uh, medical criteria when they go down to like, say, Anoka Medical Treatment, uh, Anoka Medical Center before they go on. That was supposed to, there was supposed to be some of that. Right now it goes into the general fund. Um, and I mean, you know, these are the counties' bills. One of the first bills that I paid when I, when I got hired here in January of twenty twenty was a four hundred and seven thousand dollar bill for an individual that was at nineteen hundred dollars a day sitting at Anoka. We couldn't place him anywhere. And Anoka didn't have, they didn't have room for him at St. Peter. So we're paying that, the taxpayers are paying that. Well, that's going into the general fund. We should be taking that money, at least most of it, and allocating it into behavioral health, mental health, that kind of stuff because it's just, it's a problem. But the one thing that I will, the other thing that I'll stick in this direct care and treatment, and you guys should, as legislators should look this up, um, there's twenty-eight state employees that get paid over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that work for, they're psychiatrists.
Yep.
Their combined wages for twenty twenty-four were nine point two six million dollars for twenty-eight employees that work as psychiatrists. And as far as I could find, a few of them, it wasn't even their main job. There's one gentleman that works in Baxter that has his own practice and he's the highest paid. It's like, was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. I mean, and so when you look at the DCT operating adjustment county cost in the sheet that I provided, you know, it's going in twenty-six, twenty-seven to fourteen, from fourteen million to eighteen million. Well, when I looked up similar states, Cali- California and New York being the higher ones, right? Cause there are other, there are also counties that run human services, um, delivered, uh, county-delivered human services. The highest paid person in California in that same type of position, three hundred thousand dollars. New York, which costs living extremely high, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. What? I mean, if we're going to be paying those, again, I, I believe, I'm the human services director, I believe in this, but if we're being forced to do this stuff with all the mandates, like Commissioner DeHaene said, we have to be able to pull back some of that and then have people, a voice so that people can look at some of this stuff for us. That's what's called that.
That, that twenty-four million was across all the counties.
All the counties, correct.
But the, the challenge is, and I, I got some of those crazy numbers too from Todd County this morning, but, uh, you know, the, the delay for you to get somebody into St. Peter, I mean, they gave, they had numbers of over five hundred days, which is ridiculous because I toured St. Peter last fall. They've got openings. They just don't want to do anything different. They've got people in there that are on the last years of life. They're totally harmless. They should be somewhere else. It's just that they've currently spent thirty-plus years in there. They don't know anything other than those four walls, but yet there's a time to transition people out of there. St. Peter is running at, I mean, such a small capacity as far as actually doing the job they're designed to, because there's a lot of people in there just keeping beds warm. And then there was open beds too. We walked in there and we said, at minimum, you could instantly say, you could add twenty-five percent more occupancy just with what's there. They got the capacity, but they just don't want to do it. So those are the things we are working on. Now there's change though with DCT and the fact that they were trying to separate it from any elected official. We do have, and it's still in the bill, is the legislation to once again make that director equal to a commissioner where the governor has appointment authority. So at least there is some connection to the governor's office because it was just going to be that unelected board appointed by the governor. So they, they built in an insulated wall between them so nobody could touch it. And I mean, that's, it's a huge budget. It's five thousand employees and they wanted to be in their own little world. It just was, it was wrong in every which way, but, so it looks like that's coming back, but DCT needs a lot of work yet. Um, this realignment is just the beginning, but we got to get to where they're actually functional and doing. Anoka's busy. I mean, Anoka's doing a good job. Uh, they serve a lot of very needy people, but we got to figure out how to get them in and out of there and get them to the next level where it's not constant. Now that daily rate's up over twenty-two or twenty-three hundred dollars. So it's going through the roof. Counties can't afford it. It's not right for the people they're serving either. It is a, get them in for the, the heavy dose, the full treatment that they need, but then start to work them back into society.
And for them to work with the case managers at the county level more because we understand, we've worked with these clients oftentimes for decades, you know, because a lot of these are just repeat, um, you know, people that are on civil commitments and mental health and, you know, they don't utilize us at all. Um, so these people then they get medicated and they just sit there and our case managers don't, aren't contacted by, uh, you know, aren't, aren't involved in that process because it's not part of the process and it needs.
Part of that St. Peter thing could be a staffing issue though too, where they just can't get enough staff to fill the other beds or partly related to regulations.
They didn't so much complain about staffing or regulations amongst that group. They just, they walked us through, showed us all the different pods and all the different facilities. And we did question them and they, actually they agreed that, I mean, we could use this space so much more efficiently.
Who owns St. Peter?
What's that?
The state does?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's running by direct treatment. You know, and I know that you guys, maybe some buzzwords that you guys have heard, but talking about the, um, the rate system that social services has. Um, and you know, we have rate exceptions where we, we have to, you know, when we go through the rate calculator and then it comes out and the, the, um, the businesses or, you know, the providers come back and say, well, we can't provide the care for that price. This would be a new exception. Part of this group we came up with was that the majority of the rate exceptions that were really high were state facilities, the MSOC's facilities. And we're not saying that we should be able to provide those, they should be able to provide those, but if they know the tool's broken, the state itself, then why are we using it? And then.
Making you go through all that.
Making us go through all of that, like change the tool. It's not, it cannot be that hard.
Fully agree.
So you got four weeks, you can fix it all, right?
In the mail, you'll all be done.
We're like the dog tied to the tree.
One way or the other.
Will bark, but they got the control.
You know, if you end up passing some of the costs on, try, try as hard as you can to give us the control to tailor the stuff the way we need tailored to make it work. Just tell us to follow, have to follow the same rules with half the money.
And I was happy to see that they're delaying trying to take over the dental. Why four years, is that right? That's what I had read.
Well, the original bill was for four years. Then the, um, senator that was carrying it changed, took the amendment or added amendment to go back to two and change some things. Um, then I had gone to battle, I was on that bill when it was four years, um, and so had challenges with it. So then last, was it Thursday we did the markup? And I got the four-year language put back into our HHS omnibus bill. Now it's got multiple steps ahead of it, so we'll be watching that to see where and when they pull it back out. Um, and then we'll keep that battle going all the way through to the passage on the floor and try to make sure it stays in because we need it bad, but.
And this is a prime example. We're already doing it well local.
Exactly.
And if you take it to the state level, who's going to, who's going to get hurt? The very people that need the services.
Exactly. And it's, when it, when the amendment came out, the day that it came through the first time, which was a couple of weeks ago, that amendment comes up. And so I've got some of the people working that, that are in the audience that advocates for it. So I texted them, where did this come from? Well, there's a hu- particular House member in Rochester that brought this forward and the senator that, uh, added the amendment is from Rochester and they compared notes and, uh, that's, that's supposed to be the healthcare mecca of the world in Rochester, but some of their elected officials do more things to mess us up with healthcare-related stuff. Um, it's just the constant battle. But anyhow, so then it made sense why, why that amendment all of a sudden surfaced because nobody else knew about it. Everybody was on board to do the four-year delay. Um, but we will definitely keep an eye on it and I don't know how many more times they'll present that amendment, but we'll keep it coming back up. It's like whack-a-mo when they, they bring up the other one, we'll hit it and try to keep this one in play.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Right? No, I just want to say thank you, um, and Senator Druckey, you kind of touched on it at the beginning. It's a, I think it's, we're taxing Minnesota taxpayers enough. It's just a matter of priorities.
Yeah. Yeah, we, the state doesn't need any more tax money. We just got to do what's right with the money that's there. There's plenty of money. It's, uh, but we got to get rid of some of that crazy stuff.
All right. Well, thank you both for being here. We certainly appreciate it and taking the time out of your schedule.
Thanks for having us.
So good information.
You've done a great job.
Hopefully we can, we can change a few things and move forward.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Had made the motion, is there a second?
Sure.
Show our seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.